Meeting of September 25th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room, One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick?
Here.
Director Space?
Here. Moment of silence and salute to the flag. Today's moment of silence is going to be for Rhonda Owansky. She was on the College Search Committee, and she also was the founder and the administrator of the Sussex County What's Going On? And she just recently passed away, and our thoughts and prayers are with her family at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald/Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden with a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number six, we have no proclamation certificates and presentations. Number seven, public hearing. A, final adoption ordinance 24-06. At our regular meeting held on September 11th, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald issue of September 17th, 2024, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Capital ordinance, amending capital ordinance number 22-05, which provides for certain capital improvements at the Sussex County Career and Technical High School, heretofore finally adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, on April 6, 2022, to amend the improvements authorized therein. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened? Commissioner Hayden, in a second. Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed? Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, and a second, Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. Can I get a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
Move.
Okay, Commissioner Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Okay, Commissioner Schick, in a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. B, final adoption, ordinance 24-07. At our regular meeting held on September 11th, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald issue of September 17th, 2024, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 18-01, which provides for various 2018 capital improvements, heretofore finally adopted by the Board of Chosen Freeholders, now County Commissioners, of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, on March 28th, 2018, as previously amended to amend the description set forth therein. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened? Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second from Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Okay, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed? Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second, Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, okay. Motion carries. A motion that this ordinance be finally adopted. Okay, Deputy Director Carney, in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second from Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. C, final adoption, ordinance 24-08. At our regular meeting held on September 11th, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald issue of September 17th, 2024, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 21-07, which re-appropriates excess bond proceeds to provide for various capital improvements, heretofore finally adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, on July 28th, 2021, to amend the description set forth therein. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened? Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second, Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Okay, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed? Okay, Commissioner Hayden, in a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Can I get a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted? Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, in a second. Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Can I get a motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center? Okay, Commissioner Schick, in a second. Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second from Commissioner DeGroot, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Floor is open. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment? Okay, Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, I'm ready for a break, so number nine. Commissioner comments, I'll start with Commissioner Hayden. Okay, sounds good. Okay, Commissioner Schick, please.
Thank you, Director. So, I attended the... green button, thank you. I attended the Commissioner, excuse me, the College Board meeting last evening, and they had indicated that they've seen an enrollment increase of about 1.4%. There was a 15.9% increase in application, and the largest increases seemed to come from the northern sector of the county in Vernon, Sussex, and Walkhill Valley, respectively. The largest decreases in enrollment were in Sparta and Lenape High Schools. They are scheduled to meet with the following high schools in the very near future, that would be Hapakong, High Point, North Warren, and Walkhill. Positive note is that the increase in applications are noted in a decrease in a pool of candidates from graduating seniors around the county. So there's actually a lower number of graduates, and they had a higher number of applications to join the college. So, you know, that's the positive report of their... We received today the climate survey, we've just received it before the meeting, none of us have got a chance to look at it, so I guess we'll have to wait till next meeting with that. For me, that's all I have to report today.
Commissioner DeGroot? Yes, so first, I would like to begin by revisiting a goal I set forth back on January 1st during our reorganization meeting. Feels like a little bit, you know, forever ago, but the goal specifically is supporting and expanding agricultural programs at Sussex County Community College and Sussex Technical School. I'm pleased to announce that as of last Friday, the goal has been achieved with my efforts along with SCCC's, Hudson Farms, it has come to fruition. So last Friday, September 20th, Alyssa, the student from Sussex County Community College's Agriculture Program, began her internship at Hudson Farms' state-of-the-art, temperature-controlled greenhouse. This internship offers her and future students the chance to apply classroom knowledge in a hands-on environment. The greenhouse allows them to grow crops even during the non-harvest months, right, which we're entering, which aligns perfectly with the academic calendar. So, it's really good. Alyssa reported that her first day at Hudson Farms was incredible. The success would not have been possible without the help of many. I'd like to extend my gratitude to Jason Frue, Aaron Trolle, and the administration at SCCC, Peter Kellogg, John Wonderlick, Nola, and OPAC on its own, Marty Kane, for their invaluable help. Also, I'd like to thank all of you for your support, allowing me to take this initiative hands-on, allowing me to work hard, so I do appreciate it. While this milestone has been met, I've been looking ahead at ways to collaborate Sussex Tech with this and expanding their agricultural program as well. So, exciting news on that front. Additionally, Deputy Director Chris Carney and I attended the Northern New Jersey Association of Counties meeting at the Brownstones in Patterson, first time ever in Patterson, so really, yeah, really unique experience for me. I played basketball in Newark, but not Patterson, so, yeah, a little different than the farm. But it was a productive evening with discussions covering a range of topics, including the 250th anniversary of both the American Revolution and Warren County coming up, optimization of OEM and juvenile detention services, veteran services, and shared travel routes for many of us in Western New Jersey commuting to NYC, the metro area. We share those routes. Overall, it was a valuable opportunity to hear from my fellow commissioners, and a great learning experience to hear what is occurring around us in Sussex County. On another note, the second meeting of a foreign land preservation plan update has taken place previously a week ago. Overall, mainly the public meeting that I've discussed with the Agricultural Development Board and the Subcommittee, it's going to be taking place officially October 21st, that's a Monday, at 7:30 PM here in the Commissioner's Room. A graphic prepared by the Land Conservancy will be sent out to, you know, spread awareness and allow public participation. Lastly, the Division of Senior Services will be hosting a virtual caregiver support group via Zoom on Friday, October 4th, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. The group offers resources to reduce stress caregivers face and provides information and services available to support them. For more information or to register, please contact Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1288. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you. I'll start with my Department of Engineering and Planning. Let me get this one on. Sussex County Bridge D-18, Mayor Silverthorne is in the room. This will help you out, Mayor. Engineering design needed for the repair to Bridge D-18 on Fenwick Road in Frankfurt is complete. Engineering, the Office of Bridges Safety Traffic has begun preparing and planning for the start of construction. Materials required to complete the repairs are on order, and work schedule is being finalized. Barring unforeseen or emergent issues, the in-house construction crew is expected to begin work within the next week or so. The bridge and road are expected to be returned to service late spring of next year. It's another in-house project, which I'm big on, as I think everybody else is, saves the taxpayer at least a third less that those jobs come in on, in labor and materials... labor, I take the materials back, in labor alone, so that's always nice, and that's a little update for you, Mayor. I know I get calls, I'm sure you get calls all the time with Fenwick Road, a little bit of a pain in the butt to get around that area. DPW patchwork and basin cleaning. DPW crews have been working on patching and repair areas of pavement distress in county routes in preparation for quickly approaching winter season. The county investment in new and upgraded specialty equipment over the past few years have significantly enhanced the crew's ability to install high-quality asphalt patches. This season, the crew has placed approximately 550 tons of hot-mixed asphalt under the pavement patching program. The program includes all 620 lane miles of county routes. Public Works crews have also been working hard to complete the cleaning of catch basin and stormwater inlets. These efforts enhance overall service water quality by removing organic and litter debris from stormwater flows. The work maintains compliance with the Sussex County Highway Agency Stormwater NJDEP permit. So far, the season Public Works crews have completed inspections of 4,098 inlets. Of those inspections, 944 inlets were identified that required cleaning. That's a lot. The crews have cleaned 425 of those inlets, with remaining work expected to complete before the end of the year. Busy, busy, busy. Sussex County Bridge Q-06, which is a pretty big hot topic, and we've been working on for a long time, before my time. The Bridge Q-06 Replacement Project on Main Street in Sparta continues to progress. The existing bridge has been demolished, and the contractor is in the process of driving sheet piling along both sides of the stream. Once the sheet piling is installed, the contractor will start work on forming and pouring the footing for the bridge. I'm pretty sure I said the same thing last time, so that update, I am not really happy with, because that sheeting should have been driven already. That was two weeks ago when we, I had that, so I can't see that not being driven unless they ran into problems, so that should be moving along a little quicker. Sussex County Bridge D-38, the Bridge D-38 Replacement Project on 519 in Frankfurt is also progressing. Last week, the contractor set the precast rigid frame, which makes up the bridge structure, another one for Frankfurt. The contractor is now focused on forming and pouring the bridge wing walls that will support the roadway adjacent to the bridge. Planning, Division of Planning received an application from Vernon Township to amend the Sussex County Water Quality Management Plan to include a new and updated municipal chapter. The application proposes to include additional 765 acres in a Vernon Township sewer service area. Most of the newly proposed sewer service in area consists of existing residential and commercial properties currently services with individual septic designs. The amended municipal chapter also proposed to include diligent seasons resorts, which apparently might be bought, we'll see about that. With the service area, the completed application will be presented to Sussex County Policy Advisorary Committee, or the PAC, at a future meeting. Once approved by the PAC, the proposed amendment will be presented for consideration by the County Commissioners prior to formal submission to NJDEP. The review and approval process will be consistent with requirements of the Water Quality Management Planning Rules and the Sussex County Water Quality Management Program Plan Amendment and Revision Procedures. That's what I have on that. As Commissioner DeGroot said, we did attend the NJAC meeting with the North Jersey other commissioners and so on. It was at the Brownstone, which is nice in Patterson, it is, food was very good. You know, it's nice to network with the other commissioners, kind of throw some ideas around, usually pick something up or hand something out, I guess, when it comes to ideas, always a good way to network. Sussex County GOP, I just want to thank them. We had a meeting, I guess on Saturday it was, and they did a food drive for our food pantry, which was nice, so I just want to say thank you to them. And then I know Jill will probably segue into this, but we had a mayor's meeting again that we started last year. I think we had 11 mayors, 11 or 12 mayors that attended, which is always nice, going over shared services. Sheriff Strata had a couple of good ideas, which was nice to hear, but I will save that for Director, I don't want to steal your thunder. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we also had Sussex County Day since our last meeting, and it was a nice day, and it was packed, but it was nice to see all the different departments from the county out, and everybody asking questions, that was a great day. And then Chris said about the mayor's meeting, it was a very good discussion, it was about an hour long, and I look forward to the next one. Again, we can't have the whole board with us, because then we can't discuss any county business if we're all together. Today, I went to the Economic Development Partnership Meeting, and for as little as $200, you can become an investor into the economic development, which is very important for the growth of our county. And Jack and I had a Health and Human Services meeting yesterday, so we've been just very busy, and we had an ARPA meeting last week, so, which you were going to discuss, Excel, weren't you?
Probably not.
Okay, sounds good. And Sussex Tech, their enrollment numbers, I have an update that, whoops, I just lost it, here we go. They currently have 744 students enrolled, 195 in the ninth grade, 193 in the 10th grade, 192 in the 11th grade, and 164 in the 12th grade. And it's nice to see that the communication with Sussex Tech, we are not asking for these numbers, and they are easily providing them, so all is good on that. What else do I have here? Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing, Flu Vaccine Clinics, Fall 2024 Schedule. The Office of Public Health Nursing will be holding flu vaccine clinics at various locations throughout the county during October to best accommodate the needs of our residents. Appointments are required. To schedule an appointment or obtain additional information, please call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. On Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30 PM, please visit the Public Health Nursing website at www.sussex nj.us/flu to view the 2024 Fall Flu Vaccine Schedule. The Office of Public Health Nursing is also scheduled to attend various community events during October to provide free blood pressure screenings and educate the public about diabetes, breast cancer, childhood lead poisoning, and healthy homes. Office of Environmental Health. The Office of Environmental Health has been busy reviewing and approving temporary food vendors for all end-of-summer events and fall activities to ensure the health and safety to the public. To learn more about the services provided by the Office of Environmental Health, please visit the Sussex County website at www.sussex nj.us. Division of Senior Services, Essay Contest for the 24th Annual Salute to Military Veterans. Each year, a patriotic essay contest is held among Sussex County students in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades to express their support and appreciation to the veterans of Sussex County. Each school selects two essays, one from a boy and one from a girl. Copies of the selected essays must be forwarded to the Division of Senior Services by October 4th. All entries will be reviewed and judged in a confidential manner by members of the Veterans Committee. Essays from one boy and one girl will be selected, and the contest winners will read their essays during the annual Salute to Military Veterans Parade on November 3rd, 2024. For additional information, contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1226. Center for Lifelong Learning at SCCC. The Division of Senior Services collaborates with Sussex County Community College to offer educational presentations and classes to seniors through the Center for Lifelong Learning. The Center is hosting a free lecture titled "Culture in Artifacts and How They Present Culture" on Friday, October 4th, 2024, at 2:00 PM in the atrium of the Performing Arts Center at SCCC. Join Professor Michael Hughes for Part 1 of this four-part series that will span two semesters. To register or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services by calling 973-579-0555, extension 1277. And that is all I have. Okay. Number 10, approval of consent agenda, there is none. Number 11, approval of minutes, the regular meeting of September 11th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting?
Move. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second, Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number 12, ordinance, no additional ordinances. Number 13, appointments and/or resignations. A, resolution to appoint Shannon Rasmussen as member of the Sussex County Youth Services Commission to fill the unexpired term vacated by Joan Lee Collierd. Said term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024. Resolution B, appointment of Alyssa Friedzorjik as a member of the Sussex County Youth Services Commission to fill the unexpired term vacated by Teresa Gallagher to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2026. Resolution C, appointment of the Honorable Dina M. McCulca, JSC, Family Part Judge, as a member to the Sussex County Youth Services Commission to fulfill a state-mandated position. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A to C? Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second, Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Okay, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through H?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a Deputy Director, Deputy Director, what am I saying here, sorry. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Number 15, there are no awards of contracts, change orders, bids. Number 16, financial payment of bills list September 25th, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay the bills? Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, and a second from Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Number 17, personnel, personnel agenda of 9/25/2024. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Still moved.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes. Number 18, administrative report.
Thank you, Jill and Commissioner Director. Real quick, I just, we just continue on with our union negotiations, and we're continuing on our scrubbing of the budget in preparation of the upcoming budget meetings, and I was happy to report that out of the 84 people that signed up for the leadership program we had these past two days, and Will seems to have made it through it very well, and Lorraine, 82 people showed up. So we had a very high percentage of people that attended those sessions, and I was very proud to put that on for the county, and I'm going to do it again first quarter next year, and that's all I have.
That's great, thank you. It was nice to see all the, when Jack and I were here yesterday, to see everybody leave, it's like, wow, look, they signed off, they signed up, that's great. Okay, number 19, county council report.
Couple things briefly. Tomorrow, I should have the appraisal very late for the jail. I got it, just kind of just like rolling through it all class, because between the three buildings, it's about 250 pages, so I was kind of scrolling through this, but I'll have to read tomorrow. Dennis Library, we're just waiting on a response from the library's council, but that was moving ahead, just sort of getting practice, we're good on our end. Private Bank, I'll have the resolution for you for the next agenda to authorize somebody to enter a new contract, and we're negotiating back and forth on the agreement, so that should actually be ready around the same time, so we should have removed one right or the other. And lastly, we have been involved in a quick piece of litigation, a matter of Marcito versus Sussex County, it stemmed from a Vernon Township resident, it was in a longstanding dispute with the county or the construction, excuse me, with the township or the construction of the house, the house, and we had sued, involved the Construction Board of Appeals, the county had denied him, gave him the basis of suing the county. The insurance company was a little slow here, insurer was a little slow getting back to everybody in terms of coverage, so, or just to protect the county's rights, we jumped in fast and actually filed a motion to dismiss, which I'm happy to report was granted, so the county's out of the case, and then on the heels of that, we got the coverage letter, so they actually agreed to cover it. So, we recovered, we got out of the case, and it was a good result all the way around, but I was happy to remove it when we did, so I thought that tied up, and that's all I have in politics, I'll tell them later. Legal matters for you for executive.
Nice.
Sorry, Director. So, thanks for reading that 250, because that's about 249, more than I would want through, that's for sure. But just going to the private bank, so, and I'm not going to hold you this, we, I'm thinking if we get everything done, we should be able to close the end of the year. What do you think?
Yeah, so believe it or not, like in the country, the only issue is like our due diligence isn't a lot, you know, we need their phase one, there's not, there's no zoning issues.
issues. The way the agreement's crafted now is it's, I, I think the way the agreement is set up now is it has like a 90-day due diligence period, but that's at the long end. I don't think it's going to take us more than 60 to do whatever we got to do to make sure it's always good, and then we put in a close to close within 30 days.
Perfect.
So, the only two issues that we need to do on our end is make sure we have the funds set aside, certified with ALCA, so we're done with that piece with her, and make sure there's no, like, environmentals, so as long as we get a clear environmental report, we're good to go.
Very good. Appreciate that.
Nice. Thank you. Twenty, Unfinished Business. Anyone have any unfinished business?
I just wanted to go back to what you said earlier, Director. We did have an ARPA meeting slash maybe facilities meeting, but it was important that we did talk about ARPA because we're getting down to nitty-gritty, and what's happening a little bit is our bids are coming in a little lower than we proposed. So, for instance, if we have a $100,000 truck, they're coming in at 80 grand, we have that $20,000 surplus, and we're looking to spend that somewhere else, because again, we don't want to give anyone back, not a penny. So, we're working on that, but, but it takes a while to get, once you put that RFP out, it takes a little bit to get that, that back and whatnot, so Ron and Elker...
Encumbered by, what was the date? By the end of this year.
And the 31st is it.
So, we are, we are close.
So, Ron and Elke and Ron are doing a good job with that. We have contingency plans, a lot, lots of them, the wish list kind of, if you will, so I just want to get everybody up to date with that.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Number 21, Anyone have any new business? Okay. 22, Public Session from the Floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden and a second Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The floor is open.
Good evening again, and I'm here again for the same reason that I basically come every week, and it's not just me alone, there are several people who I come to represent. There are many people who, due to family obligations, work obligations, whatever, cannot come, and so I am kind of being the voice of many people, not just myself. And once again, same issue, stolen valor. It doesn't, it's not any less of an issue, it's, it's still a serious issue, and it may be getting worse depending on what happens with investigations, and I feel it's very, very sad for everyone, including the county, and it, it just gives us a very bad reputation. And I just, I just feel really bad, and I had wished that maybe Commissioner Hayden would have had the decency to resign, but obviously that did not happen. So, all I can say at this point is that if he, if he runs for reelection, he will not be reelected, and hopefully someone else will get the position who will be more concerned about the county than, than making a name for themselves and making up investigations that need to go on and causing the county money about things that supposedly happened that we've gotten nothing back on, this supposed food pantry, whatever. The only thing it's done is given the food pantry, in some people's eyes, possibly a negative reputation, which is a really bad thing. It is something that is really needed these days, and hopefully someone will be a replacement who will be concerned about the county and not about themselves, and not to make themselves the so-called big man who actually turns out to be a very small man who would say these things and laugh at them and think they're funny. It's very, very sad.
We're not going to let you make personal attacks, big man, small man. If you want to talk about something substantive for elections, that's your right, but we're not going to attack people personally.
Well, it's a very sad situation for the county, and I hope that in the future, there are better candidates that will serve the county better. Thank you.
Can you just state your name and township for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schick and a second from Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Number 23, Reminders. Please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. 24, Executive Session.
Executive Session, Resolution Regarding Providing for an Executive Closed Session Not Open to the Public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 et cetera, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Item number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, the jail and SCUMA, and item number eight, matters relating to the employment relationship personnel. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and be it further resolved that the Board may take formal action after returning from executive session except to adjourn the regular meeting.